All right, we're going to get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. We've got items on second reading, the bond ordinance providing for the funding of various park improvements by the city of New Brunswick and the county and state of New Jersey. Incorporated $150,000, therefore authorizing the issuance not to exceed $142,000. Bonds or notes to the financial park for the cost thereof. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10. Vehicles in traffic, Chapter 10-50, provisions with subtitle of New Jersey statute, Title 39, Enforcement Section, 10-50-030. Schedule and title of 39 enforcement agreements. Add 15 Maple Realty LLC, 15 Maple Street. All right, we have no ordinances on first reading, and we have resolutions. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for being taxed self certificates. Four, per request to solicitation funds for the youth empowerment services. Cover the cost of operating programs for the youth of New Brunswick. Location is George Street, Patterson Street, Saturdays, March 24th, 31st, April 21st, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., Church Street and George Street. March 30th, April 20th, 2018, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., Ryder's Lane and Deadly Road. Fridays, March 23rd, March 30th, April 20th, 2018, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Five, authorize reimbursement to multi-fund property owners with trash and recyclables for the year 2017. Trash amount, $528,991.13. Recycling amount, $57,095.83. Six, authorize purchase by police department under state contract, 8-80, 8/13, for 8T-0106. Police and homeland security equipment and supplies for Lang and Associates for one bill of proof best for the police department, not to exceed $756,025. Seven, approve order of contract, three-year municipal inspection corporation, onsite elevator inspections. Term, three-year period commencing January 2018 and ending January 4th, 2021. Specification number 64618P. Eight, approve amendment of resolution, R-011774. Reason to pay outstanding invoices in amount of $20,000 to the Department of Public Works for Stavola Asphalt Company Incorporated for furnish and deliver fit munis materials. Term, 12-month period commencing January 19th, 2017 and ending January 18th, 2018. Rebid specification number 56616PR, not to exceed $20,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Nine, approve amendment of resolution, R-117746. Reason to pay additional legal fees, an amount of $1,700 to our lay-on downing representative of Mayor James Cato and Madam Steve Middleton in the city of New Brunswick et al. And Arthur Anderson et al. in the city of New Brunswick on punitive damage claims from $242,350 to $244,050. Ten, approve amendment of resolution, R-041739. Reason to pay outstanding invoices in amount of $10,000 for the Department of Public Works with Allied Oil Company Incorporated. Furnish and deliver diesel fuel for the Department of Public Works. Term, 12-month period commencing April 6th, 2017 and ending April 5th, 2018. Specification number 58617P, not to exceed $10,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Eleven, approve or authorization to rebid requested by the law department for legal advertising and official newspaper rebid specification number 63218RFP. Twelve, authorize purchase by police department under the New Jersey State approved COOP for number 65MCES CCPS Educational Services. Commission of New Jersey Pricing System from CDW Government Incorporated for one Microsoft Service Studio, number 17, computer, not to exceed $3,913.33. Thirteen, approve amendment of resolution, reason to pay outstanding invoice in amount of $636,055 for youth services for George Gap Incorporated for bus transportation number 2017 Summer Fund Program. Specification number 58917P, not to exceed $936,055. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Fourteen, approve amendment resolution, R-121714. Reason to pay additional legal fees, an amount of $3,475 to Christopher D. Adams Esquire and Adamson Buchanan and Villa LLC for representation of Thomas Loughlin, the third city administrator. In a matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus the city of New Brunswick on punitive damage claims from $36,408,47 to $39,833,47. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution, reason to extend the contract for one additional year, an amount of $200,000 with Garrison Enterprise Incorporated. For furnish and deliver and install insertions, valves, line stops, emergency valve repair replacement for the water utility. Term, 12-month period commencing December 22nd, 2017 and ending December 21st, 2018. Specification number 56016W, not to exceed $200,000. Sixteen, resolution authorized the cancellation of various outstanding checks. Seventeen, approve Chapter 159 budget insertion, state of New Jersey for 2015 recycling tunnel drain, amount of $88,216.40. Eighteen, authorize a resolution of the city of New Brunswick to enter it into agreement with Middlesex County for Eastern Avenue and French Street, Albany Street, Pole Springs Street realignment intersection, project engineering design. Nineteen, approve amendment of resolution, Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvement project. Phase 1A, specification number 89215A, amount $16,247.88. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty, approve amendment of resolution, R-12154, change order number 11, for Underground Utilities Corporation for sanitary sewer system improvements project. Phase 1A, specification number 89215A, the amount of $2,024. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-one, approve amendment of resolution, R-011748. Reason to pay additional amount of $12,500 in connection with preliminary official statement and final official statement related to $35,507,000. Bond anticipation note dated January 5th, 2017, the Samuel Klein Company for its 2017 municipal order, not to exceed $12,500. Twenty-two, approve amendment resolution, R-01728, change order for the final with Blackrock Enterprise LLC for Rutgers Village asphalt paving and curbing. Specification number 890-15, amount of $5,009,12. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-three, resolution authorized in budget transfers for 2017 municipal budget. Twenty-four, approve the release of site performance of bond that broke ever hopeful letter to credit number 22847, an amount of $150,928.50. And balance of site inspection fees, an amount of $3,873,48 to Construction Management Associates Incorporated, 15 Maple Street, Lot Number 410, Lot Number 14-01. Twenty-five, approve amendment of resolution, R-011571. Reason to pay final legal fees in amount of $714 to Lawrence Benjamin Esquire for representation of Officer Henry Gloton. And in a matter of Willie Jarvis versus the city of New Brunswick et al. from $3,094,50 to $4,207,50. Twenty-six, approve amendment of resolution, R-031730, change order with Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated for construction inspection and engineering services for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvement. Project Phase 1, 1A, 1B, 2A and 2B, specification number 89915RFP, amount of $8,540. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-seven, approve amendment of resolution, R-091739, change order number four, credit with Allstate Powerback Incorporated for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvements project. Phase 2B, specification number 895-15B, credit amount $8,540. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twenty-eight, approve person-to-person transfer of liquor license from Old Business Corporation to Blackrock of New Brunswick LLC, 61-63 Church Street, liquor license number 12143306706. And we have items for discussion by council, public discussion, and so on. All right, meeting has come to an end. Would a clerk please call?
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied. That the annual notice gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal clerk of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the municipal public. Filed with the city clerk and has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board of the lobby of the city hall. New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely The Home News. Can we please stand and collect immediately?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please remain standing among the silence about those that are defending freedom around the world and those that continue to defend freedom and those that have lost their lives? And especially at this time of year, those that are deployed overseas, especially during this holiday season. Just pray for each and every one of us during this holiday season and all those that are deployed around the world. Thank you.
Four seconds.
Chair?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we have no public hearings, but we will give an ordinances on second reading. Number one, bond ordinance providing for the funding of various park improvements in the city of New Brunswick. Middlesex, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriate $150,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuances of not to exceed $142,000. Bonds or notes to the finance part to the cost thereof. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? And minor quick five minutes, please state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradville from New Brunswick, here in New Brunswick today, as you know. Can you, can anybody on the council tell me what, for what purpose this bond ordinance is going to serve?
Counsel.
They're doing some equipment and some purification projects for New Park, Alice Jennings, and they put in all the processes over there.
Okay, so this is existing parks, not the new parks that are being developed as well?
Your summary was accurate, is to buy two fitness courts, one for Bucklup Park, one for Alice Jennings Archibald. There's some grant money involved in that, and then some additional money to do some landscaping improvements at various parks. The mayor had hoped to have the fitness courts installed by June of 2018, that's why we're getting an early start on it.
Okay, thanks. Just out of curiosity, has the Parks and Gardens Commission been involved with this at all? Are they aware of this, or did they sign off on it or propose it?
I don't know that for certain. I am, I do believe they have been involved in the planning of, at least the purchase of the fitness courts. The landscaping, I would probably, I doubt the landscaping would be something that they'd be opposed to, but I don't know that they've had a chance to review any of the landscaping plans. Yet we just hired a landscape architect who's working in the park system, and that gentleman will design all summer long, and then we'll start planning and improving things as well.
Terrific, and so by fitness court, we're talking about, it's like a basketball court, or will there be hoops?
No, it's all exercises and push-up stations, pull-up stations, things like that. An elevated floor for other kinds of aerobic exercises.
Thank you. Anybody else seeing them move the orders?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick. Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10-50, provisions with subtitle of New Jersey statute, Enforcement Section 10-50030. Schedule and title, 39 enforcement agreements. Add 15 Maple Realty LLC, 15 Maple Street. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none, moving orders.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Resolutions, one through Senator, does anyone from the public? Give your number, five minutes, give your name and address.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. I'd like to ask first about, I guess, 744 is the Middleton case. Is this the final amount for Mayor Cahill's legal representation? And does this amount, oh, I'm sorry, this is, this is the, oh, it's both cases. Okay, so that's my question, but is there any breakdown of how much is one case and how much is the other?
Council President, I'm the council. This is an interim bill. I do not think it's the final bill. As to the Milton case, which everybody knows was reasonably resolved, but you combine them together for the same law firm. Of course, Mr. Don, he represents the mayor in the Anderson matter as well. With respect to the breakdown, as to the 1700, I do have that somewhere. I know I booked that, but I don't want to.
It's okay, I'm not concerned about the 1700, I'm more concerned about the overall, but I'll follow up later for that. But while we're on the topic, the Anderson cases, are any updated? Still awaiting the trial date?
That's my understanding.
Has it been assigned to a particular judge?
At my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Like to ask about 746, why is there a need for the rebidding of legal advertising, official newspapers?
Nobody submitted a bid.
No, no newspapers submitted a bid.
No newspapers submitted a bid.
Oh my God.
You should have brought that to that.
I don't think we qualified.
He said newspapers.
If we did, if we did, we would apply, but it's interesting that no newspaper applied to be the official newspaper of the city. Finish up by asking about 760. This is the final legal bills for the representation of a police officer. Can you tell me how the case was resolved, or is the case still ongoing with other parties and just the officer has done with his?
I mean, if the case is resolved, my understanding is the case is ultimately dismissed with no money paid to Mr. Jarvis. But I will have to verify that if need be. This is a final bill in connection with Mr. Benjamin's representation of Officer Gloton on the punitive damage counts.
Thank you. Is it a federal lawsuit or a county?
I think it was a state's Superior Court, but it's not holding to it.
Thank you.
Danielle Moore, could I ask you a question about item 18? That's for Eastern Avenue and French Street. Would you be able to, I know I once was told when I asked for a stop sign to be split there, but would you be able to tell me is that right in front of the train station? The piece right there on Eastern and French Avenue where you have the straightaway, and then that's where the car merges to the right? When I asked you, wow, does the car have to stop or yield there? That, I was told that that piece was being taken out of this, this project?
No, it's not. This is a designed project to totally rework that intersection known as the Eastern Avenue and French, Albany Street. The improvements are supposed to be helpful to the development that is going to happen across the street when they have the burn wall, burn wall site. So, this is, this is an engineering project with, in cooperation with the county. The county and the city are joining forces to cause a redesign of that intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Despite the specific to the location, this Moore's part of that, that is encompassed in the design concept, that that area that she's referring to will be modified as part of the plan, but the construction is not any time soon. It's just a design.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Stay down.
Second. I was saying, so noted. So noted. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Any items that the council needs to bring up?
I just want to say a thank you to Director Caputo for organizing the toy event this year. And it's my correct understanding that he do the toys out to children on Christmas Eve, which is a very nice thing that they do. And also, Michael Toblin organized a community event to raise funds for a local food bank, and that was also a big success. So, council people in the community do these things for each other.
I just want to add to that that this past Saturday, the students who were before church held their 24th annual Christmas party for children in the community. And for most of those 24 years, the New Brunswick Police Department has sponsored with us, and so most of the organizations have joined in the process, including the Latino Fire Fighters Association. And this year, we had the police, the fire department was there, and we saw over 800 children receiving a toy, a gift, took a picture, we sent it. And so it was really good, so I want to thank everybody who was involved.
Okay, thank you. Open it up to the public, if you have anything, please state your name, five minutes.
Danielle Moore, I'm now getting back to you. We just heard that Eastern Avenue and French Street, the project will not be done anytime soon. I'm hoping that the city will consider putting a stop sign to make the cars stop at the light when it's red and not to yield due to where they're not respecting the pedestrians as they're waiting there to cross the street. So, can that please, please happen soon, soon, due to where we just heard the project is not getting done anytime soon to take that, that piece out of the intersection down there?
Are you talking about the one coming from under the, under the avenue to the right?
Yeah, yeah, you're coming straight, straight, where then you merge to the right where the light is red, but there's not stopping at the light. They're using it as a yield, and they keep going right through due to where they're not respecting pedestrians as they're standing there to cross the street.
If we can note that with the police department?
Not yet.
But that's a county road, so you'd have to request it through the county road department.
Well, we can give tickets, all right? We can just note that with the police department?
So, would that be a big thing just through the county, just to request to put a stop sign there to make, just because it's county?
And you'd be surprised on the paperwork?
Yes.
Well, okay, I hope to see it done, due to where we just heard nothing will be done down there anytime soon, like it was told me the last time I requested that a project was being done. We just heard that it will not be getting done anytime soon. Thank you. I would like to thank the city for Lee and Lawrence Street, the curbs being redone there, making it passable for a person in a wheelchair to there. Also, I also would like to thank the New Brunswick Fire Department for helping and with keeping wires from hanging, even though I know it's not their responsibility, but how the fire department has been helping out by clipping loose wires for someone getting hurt. I will thank, if you can thank your team for helping with that, please, thank you. Then also, that's where I heard you mention where about with the park, with this bond, and you said it's for park repair. I hope for Baker Park and Park on Harvey Street will be replaceable water fountains, due to where I showed you pictures the past year or year or so, that believe that that water is not safe to drink there. And the city keeps saying that they're going to do something, and then due to where, my proof was, due to where I wasn't the only one that felt that the water fountain is not safe in Baker Park. That's, I'm glad they did, that's where the recreation supply bottled water for the kids at that park. So, keep in mind for the bond for the parks, please to replace the water fountain there. Thank you. Then, due to where, I'll ask another question. Would someone please tell me, or show me a piece of paper, some paperwork, what is going on with Lee Avenue and repair of the road that's slowing down for them putting speed bumps down?
I don't know if we have any papers or anything like that. Speed bumps usually go for the traffic with the neighbor's signatures?
Specifically, the PSG gas monetization project phase two is what affected, caused all, it'd be torn up and put all the gas mains in. Currently, it's our understanding from the contractor, they have 80% of the mains, only 20% of the services have been connected. Portions of Lee have not been connected on service. We are struggling to get these people to push along. We had a mini incident with them just to get the road plates off the road by, at this time of year, because of snow plowing potential issues with, you know, road plates with snow plows. So, unfortunately, public services not very quick in responding, and that's part of the challenge that we're having. We still even have a challenge from their phase one project in Somerset Street, which has not been totally remedied as well. And that we expect to be paved in its entirety as well. So, we're challenged in getting their response. So, specific to Ms. Moore's request, I would just encourage you to just check with Kevin Jones, because he mentioned about, you know, still the need for a petition, I believe, but I would just respectfully ask you to check with Kevin Jones on that. But notwithstanding, assuming that is done, we still have to wait until the public service is done, and that's our challenge. We can't get them to finish quick enough.
Well, okay, due to where I reported, I report to you and show you the pictures of just about every accident in that area, and due to where there's a delay, due to where each time, like I said, someone says, they put it through, okay, it will be done so, so, soon. I just refresh your memory, wow, you have three big accidents, including two boys getting hit by a car on the corner of Lee and Ward. You have three accidents on the corner of Lee and Lawrence, that's the next corner, involved with a young man getting hit, hit by a car there. Then what, you have two on the corner of Fulton, the next block, and then what, another accident on Lee and Ellen? So please, something, something surely has to be done, done soon, within a year and a half time, due to where we've been working on these speed bumps. So, due to where we hear a delay on this, I'm asking the city to take the time where, okay, can you put some speed meters there when they flash and show people, okay, what? How, I don't know what type of machine it is that you call them, but to show as a person's going by to show their speed limit that they're speeding, is it, can the city please do that?
Sure we can ask, do you have police departments look into that?
Yes.
I'm not talking about the mobile one with the police department. I'm talking about permanent ones where you put on the pole, maybe next time I will take the picture and bring them here, where it's a permanent meter where you put on the pole and says speed limit 25 miles per hour, and then as you're going by, it will say your speed limit automatically?
Right, we understand. Though that's, again, the amount of paperwork and the monies and everything, it goes into, it's going to take a little while.
Wow, take a while, after many accidents that I didn't name to you, like I said, back to back, where I feel I don't think the city is really taking me serious enough. Nine accidents in the same area. Do you have, do you have something to say, counsel?
I'm talking to her, I'm not speaking to you.
Oh, I just noticed the way you kept commenting every time I kept saying, wow, nine accidents. I just, I saw you twice just commenting to her, I just like to know, what?
All I'll say is that accidents happen, and I'm sure this could be a deterrent, but not all these accidents are because we don't have speed bumps there. How do you, how do you know that? How do you know that that's the reason? How do you know that the person didn't get in an accident because they were on their telephone or doing something? You're sitting here blaming the city? You're sitting here blaming the city and the way our streets are for the accidents, and you don't even know what caused the accidents. Could you tell us what caused any of these nine accidents that you're speaking about?
Majority of them, yes, it's speed limit, due to, due to where, how, wow.
Well, how do you know that, did they get a speeding ticket?
Due to where I hear, yes, quite a few of them, yes, that I, if I'm there taking the pictures, questioning, yeah, yes.
Well, I don't know if you have all those facts, but why, they're all good things that you have, but all the accidents are not because we don't have speed bumps. They could be for a number of reasons.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking you to take it serious, the question, to put them down.
You're certainly taking it serious, but I just want to ask you that nothing happens overnight, okay? We can't, we can't get, we just don't...
This is going on for a year and a half now, we were talking about this, not this summer, we were talking about this last summer.
Well, no one's trying not to do the speed bumps here, like Mr. Valente said before, everybody said here, it all has to go through a process, and whether we like the process or not, that's the way it is.
Okay, thank you, well, keep in mind, the police department, I hope you can, possible, put the meters up, like you said, it will take time, I will have patience, but hopefully, don't have to wait till next year for all this to get done again. Thank you.
Good evening, once again, members of the board, members of the council, my name is Charles Cradaville, and I am your Christmas gift this year from the New Brunswick Housing Authority, who canceled their meeting at the last minute for the third time this year, tonight. I had a bunch of questions prepared for them, but they can't get it together enough, they can't even get enough of their own board to show up to have a meeting tonight, so that's why I'm here. And so, I guess the first question, I want to follow up with you, Mr. Council President. At the last meeting, I mentioned that one of these board members of this troubled agency threatened me with physical violence after the last meeting. You asked me to send you the video, I did email it to you, I wanted to ask you if you had a chance to watch it and what your comment is on it.
No comment.
No comment, okay. I already heard from a couple of the other council members, could the council vice president please tell me, if you've seen the video, if you have any comment, I think I sent it to you?
Yeah, I saw it, and I just figured that, you know, Councilwoman Rebecca Escobar will take care of the housing authority company, so I don't really comment this time.
And Councilwoman Sikora Ludwig?
I am, I'm trying for Rebecca's response to you, I mean, tend to concur with that, I don't know what transpired forth, it's a piece of a video that I watched, and it seems like an unprofessional action on his part, although not completely unprofessed, so that's my...
I wasn't getting into it with him, he interjected himself into the conversation, got in my face.
That's just a free comment I have to do, and I can comment on it more, but that's all I'm prepared to say right now.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you to Councilwoman Escobar for texting me back with her comment. Think, Mr. Egan, you have anything to say, or last time you kind of made a joke about it? All right, well, you're obviously still not taking the problems of the New Brunswick Housing Authority seriously, this is just many problems, and I'll tell you, one of the reasons that they weren't able to have the meeting tonight is because somebody you put on that board, Ms. Edno Otero, has not been attending meetings. She's missed more than she has attended, and it's quite possible she's the reason that some of these meetings can't be held because they can't have four members. And I wanted to ask the council, you know, when you appointed her, or, well, before I get there, has she taken the required classes for the housing authority members?
I have no knowledge, but my question to you is, Mr. Cradaville, have you tried to find out the reason why she's absent from those meetings? Did you ask anybody why she hasn't been absent from the meetings?
I'm asking you now?
I'm asking you, because you are, you are assuming that she's not going because she doesn't want to go. But did you ask anybody the reasons why she hasn't been able to attend? Because the last time she was in the hospital.
Oh, I did not know that.
So, and I could talk to you afterwards to tell you, this is personal stuff, but she has been in the hospital.
Okay, well, I must...
That's something that I would like to first...
I understand, I, nevertheless, I do think that she was not a good choice for the board, and we can talk afterwards about why.
And I asked you the last time, and if you know anybody better that is able to just, you can ask anyone that would be for her, I said, Mr. Cradaville, if you know anybody, submit that name, and so, so why don't you...
I suggested that it be announced to the residents of Schwartz-Robeson, and it wasn't, they just kind of picked her. And it's, it's a bad situation for many reasons. And, and yeah, I'll, I'll speak to you afterwards about it, because it's, I didn't know she was hospitalized, but I also have some information that I think you should know about, about her. The housing authority only scheduled 11 meetings this year, they had to cancel three of them. That's really not good, especially considering that HUD found them to be troubled, that they were previously rated the third worst agency in the country, that they now have a $4 million deficit, and that HUD questioned $1.4 million in spending. And, you know, at that last meeting, they were pretty arrogant about scheduling meetings that conflict with this one, that actually prevent you and me from attending, you know, both important government entities, and, gosh, I don't... When can we expect the city council to take more of an active role in this agency?
Not sure.
You don't know, are we going to wait until, until the federal government tries to take, take it away? Are we, are we going to wait until it's too late?
Well, what I will say, Mr. Cradaville, and I understand that that's your understanding of the circumstances, and I believe that they have the view, whether they are, you know, for you or not, or for anybody. I know that they have the kind of responses, some of the pieces, and the rassles, especially with the audit and everything else. And, and again, your perception and your understanding of the whole situation is kind of changed up, as you, and you do have some valid points in terms, you know, the organization that the boys don't need, then there's, I think, needs to be addressed. But I think I tend to be skeptical a little bit in terms of, you know, they have been pretty responsive in terms of HUD, and I think, maybe not with you, but what they have to do in terms of operations and, and understand that they need to meet and do, they have to do it, if not, they wouldn't be open. So again, notwithstanding, I think the four means, there is some that I don't know why, with the score on the photo with the situation, I cannot speak on that. But I think that your characterization of the whole authority is, is a little bit troublesome to me, because it's not, not everything is, you know, is the way you make a sound. Again, and there's some things that you do have some valid points, but not the whole thing. I think that they're doing the best that they can under the circumstances, with everything else in terms of project reductions, and staff that needs to be refused, and you know that already. But nonetheless, it's always one point good, but I think that it's unfair to say that they're the worst housing authority in the state.
Third worst in the country, and that's based on the HUD's, you know...
But it's, it's not, I think that they have to, it's a little bit awesome. But nonetheless, I will find out about the meetings, what is the situation, why they haven't met. Like I said, I agree that it needs, there has to be meetings, but I don't know the circumstances surrounding the cancellation of the meeting.
Yeah, respectfully, if they were doing all they could, they'd be having a meeting right now, and, you know, they would also follow through on their promises that they made, for instance, they were going to have a board retreat, they've been saying that since January. But I know they've had some setbacks, and, and it's unfortunate, it's not easy to run a housing authority, but there's some really alarming things, I've been trying to sound the alarm, and you might not always agree with where I'm coming from here, but I've been proven right several times with this stuff, and it's, I'm now seeing here a deficit of projected to increase to $4.1 million, and, and further, and it just doesn't seem like there's a response or a plan for how to tackle that, how to, you know, improve those 70-year-old buildings that folks are living in, that are falling apart. You know, unfortunately, the person who runs the Section 8 program passed away, and so now they're without a director of operations, and there's just a real need for action now.
They do, so you know, also, because I was sitting, I was sitting around after this, the last meeting, the house, Rebecca, you were there with the...
Yeah, that was a crazy one.
I was still able to, I wasn't there, but just to let you know that prior to that, I am with Councilwoman Fleming, met with some residents there, and there is some, some of the residents were at that meeting. And they did express some concerns with some of the maintenance that we, that we saw. And, and we have some works, you know, we agreed that we were going to meet in January, to start talking with the residents and trying to see the residents to organize themselves and know the process, but sometimes some of them didn't know the process, so we are working, it's not like we know to anything, but we have been, you know, we did meet with them, and we're planning to go back in January.
I think the council passed up an opportunity to evaluate the housing authority, as I pointed out in October, when you filled out that questionnaire, and you didn't, you didn't evaluate the authorities for whether they had weak membership or not. I think there's a clear, now it's crystal clear, there's weak membership of this authority, something needs to be done, and I'll, I'll just wrap up by asking if there's any update on the corrective action plan that they've been following through on. For instance, they're saying here, the, they have to, they said within 90 days, they were going to attempt to work with the city on cooperation agreement and pilot, and the target accomplishment date was April 1st, I've shared this document, Mr. Law, it was a draft document, but is there any update on that, is the city working with them? What is the, what is the, what stage are we at with the pilot agreement? Is there going to be a new pilot agreement, and, you know, what's, what's going on with that?
I can't provide an answer to that, a couple of times here, said I was not involved in any such negotiation.
I could provide a little update with respect to the corrective action plan. I did receive a draft document from their council, and I've been working on it with, with him to finalize it. So it is in process with respect to the pilot or the cooperative agreement, that's what it's called in the corrective action plan. That, that's the only item that I'm aware of that's in that corrective action plan that involves the city from that perspective. Hope to have that wrapped up soon.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd encourage you to please attend the next meeting, all of you. Thankfully, the only meetings that conflict are going to be the November and December meetings, so we need that board to show up, and we need this council to show up at 7 Van Dyke Avenue for the next housing authority meeting, please, all of you, come out and see for yourselves what's going on with this board. It's very dysfunctional, very troubled, thank you.
Anybody else in the public? On behalf of the council, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. But remember, there is another meeting coming up on December 28th, next Thursday, it starts at 5:30, so don't forget that. Seeing none. Any else want to take a moment?
Wait, I want to say something, I heard a few things here that is alarming.
Just a name and...
Doris Elliott, you said to public, I've been a resident here all my life. You say disturbing things, and some of the things that they're saying is right. You can't just assume. Can things be better? Yes, but to me, as a resident, you're very offensive, and it's not right, the way you say things. And are you a driver? I'm a driver. And it's not easy all the time, people do obey the laws. Everybody don't, but there are people that do obey the law, and they're right, you can't blame the city for everything. And I'm not trying to be nasty, I respect your opinion and yours, and you should respect mine. Simple as that, because this is what this is about, a public setting, and people should be able to voice their opinion. And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Most adjourned, Merry Christmas to everybody and your families.
Merry Christmas, Senator. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming. Sikora Ludwig.